Back in the eighties, I believe was only designed for four female inmates. Is that correct, Shalom? And things have changed quite a bit in corrections, in jails. You know, with, you're seeing a lot more mental illness. You're seeing a lot more addiction cases. There's a lot more psychiatric cases. And a lot of that burden is being borne by the jails, especially county jails and rural communities, because there are other facilities to take on that burden. So jails really need to be a very, excuse me, flexible and multipurpose function, but still meet their responsibility to the community, which is to house and keep, to house, to house criminals and to keep the community safe. But it's also meant for safety of those who work there as well. So we were contacted by Iron County, I guess it's been almost a year ago, last summer, I believe, was when we first started having conversations when we were aware that Iron County was indeed a new jail. So we've been down here multiple times and visited the jail, have looked at the situation that they find themselves in and have reviewed multiple sites. And so the point of this feasibility study is really to look at, I think it's a foregone conclusion that a new jail is needed. I believe that argument has been made. And so the point of this study is really to address the options as we see that moving forward with the selected site, which is over at the Fiddler's site. So this is a, this graphic here with the site considerations, this was a matrix that was actually done by Reed and his group to evaluate some of the previous sites. And this has been gone through before, but for sake of reference, this shows kind of how the evaluation was made. Some of the key factors for good site selection, proximity to services, to medical services, to doctors and to courts. Every time an officer has to transport an inmate to and from the jail facility for one of these instances, it takes that officer offline from a law enforcement role, but it's also the most likely time for an escape. Jails are extremely, extremely secure and safe. Escapes almost never happen. And the only escapes that happen are when there's help from the inside or during a transportation. And transportation is the highest risk for both the officer and for the community. So the more we can minimize that, it lowers that risk. It also lowers the cost to the county and the taxpayers because that time, that wear and tear on vehicles and manpower, that costs money. So all these criteria that we evaluated coming up to the current site weighed into that section. So the Fiddler's Canyon site, if we could zoom out a little bit, I'm sure you're all familiar with. I apologize if we're not having a pointer here. This is what we call the auto mall site, I'm sure you're all familiar with. This site was considered at one point early on in the conversation, but value of this property as it relates to commercial potential and commercial growth for the procedure city and for Iron County has been recognized by everybody. And so the Fiddler's site is in blue there. It's directly to the east, slightly farther up the hill. And it's a 37-acre site, give or take. And, but only the last 15 acres are being designated as what we're calling the jail site. And so the reasoning behind that, too, is to allow commercial growth to continue on the other side of the auto mall over time. One of the, this is a, what we call a brown filled site, which just, or a green filled site basically means that nothing's been built there before. So what that means is there aren't a lot of utilities on the site, but there are utilities very nearby the site. And some of the site improvements that will need to go on, there will be, you know, we'll need to pave access roads and loop around the facility. I'll show you a site plan of some concepts here in a minute that go in more detail. But utilities will be brought to the site. The other thing about the site that's a little bit unique is there is a pit that's kind of in this, it's a natural feature, it's kind of in the upper middle there. And there's a significant amount of topography there. It's not an ideal place to put a building, but it is a great place to utilize that topography to help with surface runoff and storm drainage that will be needed for this facility. I don't need to remind all of you what the last rainy season was like here. And so we are wanting to take advantage of the natural topography. And all facilities like this are required to deal with their own stormwater so that they don't just shut it and send it downstream to the next person. So this provides an opportunity, we believe, that will allow us to deal with that fairly easily and take advantage of the natural features we build the next slide. So, scroll just a little bit. So this is, we looked at two different options for this project. We had this, this is called the single pod option. And I'm going to, in a minute, go into detail about what, how the pods work, so bear with me on that. But basically, this round shape is what we call the pod, and that's where all of the, basically all the cells are. The pods are divided into day rooms, and I'll show you that in a minute. But that's basically where all of the inmates are housed. The, what we call the support building is where all the primary jail functions are. It's where all the booking, the processing, the vehicle Sallyport, which is basically where inmates arrive at the jail, and all the other jail admin functions for the staff as well. There's also programming space. And when we see a program space, that's everything from a religious chapel, a classroom, a library, it's mental health therapy, it's substance abuse, recovery and therapy, and so on. So in that, that is something that's much more important in today's jail than it was 30 years ago. Program space is extremely valuable because what it provides for the community in terms of a benefit is that, the goal is to not have somebody come back to jail. Jail is very expensive. It costs taxpayers money to incarcerate criminals in this state or any other state. And, but it's necessary. So the idea is, is that if we can properly incarcerate these folks, rehabilitate them hopefully, teach them some skills that allow them to be a useful member of society once they're back out of jail, or get the help they need with regard to mental or, mental health or addiction issues. They need to be able to come back to jail. Yeah, but it's also the sheriff's office. So, and his entire operation and crew would be on the second level of this building. So it's a co-location between the sheriff's office and the county jail. And that makes sense for lots of reasons. All of Sheriff Carpenter's staff that are jail employees are his staff, so having that proximity is important. But it's also the officers that are making the arrests and dealing with those who need to come to the jail. That's where they're constantly going back and forth. So there's a, it saves trips, again, it saves time and distance to respond to things. Within the sheriff's offices are all of those squad rooms for the patrol officers, all the offices for the sergeants, defense captains, and sheriff. So training rooms, conference rooms, there's evidence storage, crime lab, locker and training rooms for the officers. And am I forgetting anything else, Sheriff Carpenter?
He gets pretty much covered it.
Yeah, pretty much anything that needs to be in the sheriff's office is located on that level. And the other, the other option, which is, 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 we did this at Uena County and to a lesser extent at Kanan, Sand Peak County, is we provided some additional, what we call third-party lease space, which is intended for, basically just extra space for the, not only for the jail operation and the sheriff's office to grow into, but it's, it's extra lease space that third-party agencies like highway control, adult probation and parole, sometimes federal agencies, we've seen FBI, ATF, other federal agencies need satellite offices, especially out in rural communities where they have a place to land that's co-located with other law enforcement. So that's, that's another option that if it works within the budget, can be helpful to the county because it provides a revenue source as well. Next slide, please.
Yeah, I just, I just went over my, which is why it dropped.
As I talked about, we had a one pod. We also have talked about a second pod. And even laying the building out such that in the future you can even add a third pod. The way, the way the buildings are designed, the way we design our jails is in a modular way, where pods can be added, up to three pods can be added to the primary jail support building, depending on what the needs of the particular county are. Pods are very expensive, but what they do is they do provide maximum flexibility. The two pods, we did start with a two-pod solution because we believe that that's probably the ideal solution for the sheriff and jail to solve all of the needs in terms of male inmates, female inmates, all those other classifications of the special needs that I mentioned. But also provide a medical bay for onsite, minor medical procedures, dental visits, sorts of things that keep you from having to take inmates out of the jail for those services. And having those things all self-contained, so, but the challenge always is, is with every project, it is always a cost factor. So looking at a one-pod option and a two-pod option of what we've been narrowed down to, we do think it's prudent to lay the building out in a manner so that someday down the road, maybe a third pod comes into play. I can't pretend to know what it's going to be like 30 years from now, but I can say that I had no idea 30 years ago that we have the population here in Utah that we do now. So you never know. So finding ahead is a good idea. So I'm going to talk a little bit, just very quickly, about how these, how these pods work. So this is a 3D drawing of a typical pod, and you can see it's, it's basically an octagonal sort of arrangement. And if you look down on it and plan it, it kind of looks like a pizza, actually. But you have the symmetrical pod that we break into these different wedges, and we call these day rooms. And the day room is basically, and it doesn't have to be this size, this is just representational, but a day room is tied to the number of cells that serve the day room. And the idea behind all of this, why you need multiple ones, is inmates are classified based upon their events, how violent they are, and so on. So, and it's important to allow the jail commander and the sheriff to be able to segregate inmates so that they can run the jail and keep peace inside the jail. You have issues with gangs sometimes. You obviously can't have men and women. There can't be line of sight. You can't see each other. There's all kinds of considerations that need happened. So we need to make allowances to make that happen. So we start with a very symmetrical layout such as this. On the, and the day room is just that. It's just a large room that the inmates, during the day, when they're not getting their cells, spend their time in. There's tables in there, there's a TV, video visitation is in there. Contact visitation doesn't happen anymore in most, most locations, and it's my understanding, Sheriff Carpenter doesn't want to do that either.
We don't do it now.
And, and so video visitation is the way to go, and there's basically a kiosk or like a little phone booth in the, in the day room that has a monitor. And inmates get visitation privileges, use those monitors, and their family can dial in over the internet and visit them. So it saves, again, the movement of people, the issues with potential contraband being passed in a contact visit, those sorts of things. Also, there's often commissary kiosks, which is just another display that, for those who are working in the jail or who, whose families have put money into their account, they can buy certain things that the jail commander will allow them to have in the jail, a candy bar or something like that. I know that the, what do the, what do the jail jobs pay right now, Shalom?
Forty cents.
So forty cents an hour, that's before taxes. But, but the idea is, is that it becomes an incentive as well for the inmates to behave themselves and also have access to some of those things. So the important aspect of the pod is its own control, and we put pod control at the center. And pod control, think of it as an air traffic control tower. It's really, it's glazed on all sides. And these are double-height spaces. What we do is we take the cells, and this is an example of a 24-bed pod. So you have 12 cells, six stacked two-high, that are double occupancy, so it's 24 inmates per pod, or per day room. And then they share this large day room. So the room is two stories high with a mezzanine, basically, for the square, the second pods are. So the control room is actually on the second level. And we do that for the reason of it creates better views into the pod. The shape of the pod is intended to, we don't want blind corners. We don't want to be able to have anybody hide behind anything when they're in the pod. So the idea is that the officers who are walking around in the hallway observing the pod, they can see into the pod, they can see everything that's going on. And in pod control, same thing. They can see everything that's going on in the pod. They control all the doors. Everything's all electronic. And they're in constant communication with the officers that are on the floor. And in the event of an issue, they can shut off the power, they can shut off the water, they can shut off the lights. It's all controlled so that it gives the jail commander and the sheriff maximum control over, over the situation and help with keep everybody calm and behave themselves. If you want to zoom back out. So we have these long corridors that connect the pods together. And what, this corridor connects to the jail support building and goes down to central control. And central control, again, is another, kind of like air traffic control, where it's all glazed, and that, the person in central control has line of sight all the way down the hall directly into the pod, in all cases, in all pods, down the main corridor. So whoever's working central control not only has visual control, but they also have numerous, there's dozens of security cameras, high-resolutions security cameras and control monitors with tough screens, so that it's very, it's very easy to see everything that's going on in the jail at all times. Next slide, please. So, you can zoom out just a titch. So the jail support functions, very quickly, so the way a jail works, I haven't been arrested, but designed a few jails, so I'm slightly familiar with it. I've been able to go in and out in a much more pleasant way. But the way jails operate is almost all inmates are brought in in a vehicle. Usually they've been, there's been an incident, they've been arrested, they've been brought in on a warrant or arrested. And they come into what we call the vehicle Sallyport. The vehicle Sallyport is just a fancy term for a very large, secure garage, basically, where the law enforcement vehicle can come in, it has a high-speed door that opens and closes very quickly. So they come inside, the door closes, and then the transfer of the rescue into the, into the booking area can happen safely and fairly quickly. And the idea is, is that you go from the vehicle Sallyport into booking. That's where anybody who's brought into jail is put into booking and intake. So put into a holding cell and, or given a breathalyzer test or, not analyzed, but scrutinized to determine whether or not they're, they're going to be booked into jail, bailed out of jail, or what's going to be done with them. So when you're still in booking, you're not technically an inmate yet. You become an inmate once you've been booked into jail, because the booking, booking is where you're, you're either going to stay for a while or you're going to bail out and be released. Once you go through booking, and, and you've been, you have been formally booked into jail, then you go through processing, which is basically, all of your street clothes are then cataloged and put into storage. You're given jail attire and basically assigned to, classified and assigned to the pod and the day room that you're going to be in. Other main functions in the jail, probably the biggest functions that get the most use of the kitchen and the laundry. In a jail of 400 beds, you're, you're talking about 1,200 plus, plus or minus meals a day. So this, the kitchen and the laundry are very active facilities that are usually running almost 24/7. They're predominantly staffed by inmates, but that's a good thing because it's kind of a, a good thing if you're an inmate to be able to work in the kitchen or in the laundry as opposed to spending your whole day sitting in the, sitting in the day room. You're able to earn that 40 cents an hour, but also you're able to get out of the pot. Some jails also have programs where, specifically in the kitchen, they, they have a program with the inmates that they can earn their food handlers permit while they're in jail working on the cooking line, so that when they are released from jail, they have a skill to go out and get a job. The amount of sheer meals and laundry that is dealt with on a daily basis is phenomenal. It's very much like a very large hotel. So the kitchen spaces and laundry spaces have very high-capacity, commercial-grade and industrial-grade equipment. They're also probably two of the most expensive spaces in the jail from a square foot point, cost per square foot point of view, but they're absolutely necessary because they're really the heart and soul of what makes the jail operation go. If you could zoom back out to that. So when I mentioned central control, that's this red log up here, and this, this crossing corridor is that main corridor that we're talking about. Once inmates come in through booking and intake, but those who work at the jail come through the jail admin area and all the officers who work in the jail, there's a locker room, there's break rooms, there's all of their office functions. And there's a portion of that that is outside of the secure perimeter. But once the officers suit up and go through, we call them Sallyports, they're, at every, at every point where you pass through from the secure perimeter to the non-severe perimeter is a Sallyport. Sallyports basically like an airlock, where you go in, detention-grade door, that door closes behind you before the next door opens. And they're programmed that way so that you really can't, nobody can rush through a Sallyport in a direction. So once you go through the Sallyport, you're now in the secure perimeter and you're in the jail. So this corridor is in the jail, and central control is located such that these lines of sight down all of these corridors are, are clear to maintain at all points. Next slide, please. So some of the other functions of the jail that are, that are important, jail administration I mentioned, you still have a need for offices for the jail commander and the other folks that work within the jail. There are program spaces within the jail, as I mentioned, classrooms, chapels. In, in a two-pod scenario, we would put the chapel and the program spaces and the medical bay in the second pod. In a one-pod scenario, we'd need to put the program spaces back into the, into part of the admin building, so to leave room for the pod, so we had enough capacity for inmates in the pod. Also, you have to have outdoor recreation yards are required. One of the, one of the concerns that was raised in one of the public meetings was, you know, what is a, you know, when we drive by the jail, we can see razor wire and searchlights, and the answer is no. You really, the recreation yard is a walled-in yard that, from the street side, just looks like a nice, nice street wall. All of the, all of the necessary things like razor wire are on the other side of the wall, out of sight, and the wall is tall enough that it can't be climbed. But you do need to provide outdoor recreation for folks. One of the issues with the outdoor recreation space is that that's another place for contraband and into the jail. It's common where outside folks will throw contraband over the wall into the day, into the, into the yard, and inmates will, will retrieve that and then bring it into the jail. That can be accomplished by locating the recreation yard far enough away from any public road that nobody really wants to walk up 100 yards or something to get to the wall to throw it over. Or we've even seen at Uena County and in county, we actually put a mesh screen over the lid of the, of the outdoor yard, so that if any contraband was thrown in, it landed on top and it was taken care of later. So finally, storage is the thing in one of, in these types of projects that always gets underestimated. And whenever there's a budget crunch rate, the storage rooms get smaller. I think Sheriff Carpenter and Shalom can tell you that storage is a, is a premium in any jail. You need a lot of storage for lots of different things, so we don't want to, we don't want to shortcut that. Next slide, please. So like I mentioned before, the, the second floor is, is where we would locate the sheriff's office. There is a public lobby for these buildings where the public can come in, because the, the sheriff does have to interact with the public from time to time, the press or people that are coming to visit. And so there is a small public lobby that had, that will take somebody from the public up to a reception desk that becomes a secure control point for security reasons and obvious reasons. Folks just can't wander into the sheriff's office and go down that dark, kind of store. You need to be let in. There's a lot of sensitive things that are back there that need to be, for those allowed in only. So we don't need to provide, there's not a lot of public space in, in these facilities in terms of for somebody to just walk in. But it is accessible to the public, and in the event that we put the, the third-party lease space, which would be a third level on top of the sheriff's office, there would be a common elevator that would take you up to common public lobbies, and then the public could be allowed in at that point. Next slide, please. So, one of the, the approach we've taken on this project, this is the two-pod configuration that I was discussing here later, where the first pod is basically the pod for the males, just because the proportion of male inmates is still significantly higher than that of female inmates. But there, but this approach puts the female inmates in a, in the second pod, so that they're not only visually separate, but they're physically completely in another, in a jail pod. And special, special needs areas like medical, psychiatric, addiction and others could be separated in some of the other day rooms that aren't required for female inmates. These are also stacked two-high, so on the, on the upper level, you basically take the same floor plate and you stick it on top like a birthday baby, you will. And it gives the sheriff and the jail commander the flexibility to And it gives the sheriff and the jail commander the flexibility to repeat the same floor plan and layout below. Or we studied looking at an option where on the second floor, it was lower, lower risk classification inmates where they would, we would have instead of 12 two-man cells, we would have three eight-man cells. So almost a dormitory situation for, probably for folks who are serving more misdemeanor type offenses rather than violent offenders or even work release sorts of inmates. But it, it just gives the jail commander and the sheriff maximum flexibility to program their jail to extend its lifespan, get maximum efficiency and to house as many inmates as there as is practically possible without going to massive or expensive remodeling or reconfiguration of the jail. You can't, in a jail, you can't just stop running the jail to do interior remodels. You need to, those people don't go away. So the most, the more flexibility we build into the process, the better that will work for us. The other thing I'd like to mention in terms of the design and construction process, jails are very specific. It's a very specialized type of design, both for in the design side, architect side myself, but also on the construction side. Not, not every contractor builds jails and it's important that the architect and the, and the builder that you, that you select for this project are experienced in this building type because the level of detail, when you get down to how these buildings go together, types of doors and hardware, the security electronics and just the general functions and requirements of the jail, there's a ton of stuff you don't see about the ceiling and behind the walls that are absolutely necessary to the proper function of the jail. So as you make the selection for your design team and your contractor, it's very critical that you, you select a team, those individuals that have that experience. And we also recommend that jails, you don't, these aren't projects that you just design, get it all designed and then put it out on the street for a bit. The, the construction market is and building market is very volatile right now. The cost of materials is very expensive. We recommend what we call a design assist approach where right after the county would hire the design team, we would highly recommend that you immediately thereafter select the contractor. The reason for that is the contractor then becomes a part of the team from the beginning and takes place in the same design meetings with the architect and the county in meetings and provides real-time cost estimating during that process so that after we've gone through these many months of design, we get to be in, we know exactly what it's going to cost and what you're going to get. And we have lots of detailed discussions about, the sheriff may want this thing and we say, well, we can do that, but it costs this much and you might have to give up this other thing. But it's, it's very important that we go through this process because then it maximizes the value to the county at the end that you get the jail that maximizes the budget you're able to spend on the jail. Jails are not traditionally moneymakers, but you don't want to be building them every 10 or 15 years either. This is, this is really meant to be a 30 to 50-year facility, so we want to get it right. So real quickly, we go through the program process, which is basically sitting down with the jail commander and the sheriff and other stakeholders to, we go space by space, room by room, item by item, do a very detailed analysis of exactly what this facility is going to be. And that defines square footage is all of the functions that are required. Once we've done that, we then start the actual design, we append a paper or I guess now electrons to monitors and, and start fleshing out actual designs. What you've seen today is our very conceptual designs based upon our understanding of the general size of things, but we need to validate that. And then, once we get into construction, that's a very, it's probably about a two-year process to do to build a jail like this. And again, the architect is involved from the beginning all the way until the occupancy and same with the contractor if you go with the design bill or a design assist approach. Next slide, please. So this just shows, this is just diagramatic to kind of show the, the whole picture of how it works and you can see the pods. The one on the left is the main level, the one on the right is the upper level. You see on the upper level, the pod control is on the second floor. It's completely isolated from the jail. There's no physical way to get from pod controls down to the floor in the jail pod without going out the door, down the hall, down the stairs, back in through level one. That sounds kind of silly, but the idea is, is that that, that pod is kind of like the alamo. If things really go sideways in the jail pod, it's not accessible to the inmates and it would take, and the control could be maintained for a long period of time before it was compromised. We've never seen an instance where that's happened, but we built that in to the design so that it, it gives that flexibility. It also makes it so, folks, the sheriff and jail commander can hire additional staff to work in the, in the pod control that don't have to be able-bodied in terms of having to deal physically with the inmates because it's an accessible route and totally safe. If you zoom back out just real quickly, you can, so you can see on the, on the left-hand side, the different functions with the jail support, vehicle sally port, booking and intake. We have the laundry, the kitchen, some of the support spaces, the programming. And then there's usually a work release room for inmates that are allowed to be released. Sometimes folks serving a DUI condition, for example, might have to come in on the weekends or, or there's other inmates that maybe trustees that are allowed to go out and do yard work or something. That's what that's for, but it's secure just like the jail. Next slide, please. These are just some, this is just some examples. This, this picture here to the upper right, that's a typical day room. You can see the pods or the cells, excuse me, against the back wall. You can kind of see the bunks, there's two, two per cell and they're stacked too high. You have the tables and what you can't see because the photo is, you have TVs on the walls and then the kiosks for the visiting patient. The showers, the toilet systems are contained in the cells themselves. There are showers on the end, that's the shower. This is, this is a typical courtroom. One thing that we haven't programmed on this project that has been discussed is potentially one of the reasons for picking the site is potentially making or having the capacity to have a circuit court potentially co-locate nearby the building on the site to shorten the distances. Uena County and at, we actually had it part of the building. You can zoom back out. That photo on the left, that's part of a typical kitchen and then the laundry facilities. These are the, those, those washing machines are big enough that you could climb anymore. I wouldn't recommend it, they could fit. And then kind of the typical public lobby spaces, some more kitchen ideas. This is a, this is a pod control room here. You can see the touchscreens they have so they can see the inmate, they can pop the door when the door needs to be opened or locked, lock it down. Next slide, please. Okay, so Leighton Construction Company was, was kind enough to help us with some cost estimation, ballpark, cost estimate for the, for the couple of the schemes that were discussed. It was ba, it's basically based upon the one-pod and the two-pod option. There is an intermediate option, which is to do what we call shelling, which is to build the, basically the superstructure of the pod, but not finish up the interior of it until, until you need it. But what it does is it, it gets that superstructure in place so that it's just an interior remodel at that point rather than a very expensive ground-up construction. Like I mentioned before, jails are quite expensive. This is all in the document that will be posted to the site, but if you could scroll, yeah, if you could scroll, there's a summary sheet.
Ooh.
Sorry.
Okay.
So, but basically, in a nutshell, the cost ranges were around $50 million for a one-pod option and it's about $72 million for a two-pod option right now, full build-up. And then there's intermediate points in between. Obviously, the decision as to which direction going, that's, that's up to the commissioners.
Does the, does the single pod option include the study room for a second pod?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, even if we, even if we just build a single pod option, we would still, this building's still designed and we would still extend, you know, stub out utility runs and things like that for a future second pod. Reality is, is that in today's environment, well, this, this has held true forever, but especially now, you really want to build as much as you can afford today because tomorrow it's going to be more expensive and there's just nothing that changes that. We used to see an escalation factor between 4% and 5% per year two or three years ago. It's more like 10 or 12 now. And we don't know how long that'll last, but one of the, one of the purposes of this design process that I've explained and the reason why bringing on a contractor early on in the, in the process is important is because these are very big dollar decisions that affect the county and affect the sheriff long-term in terms of how the, how it will function. Jails are usually a one-shot deal every 30 years or so, so we need to get it right. So studying the various options is, is where, how we start these processes and how, how it works so that we, we provide the county and sheriff and the jail commander with the maximum amount of information so they can make an informed decision as to which direction to go. And whichever direction that is, the building will be designed in a manner that it will be the best possible version of that building we can, we can afford. So I think that's, well, that's a, if you could go to the, kind of the, there's a summary in the very end. So recommendations, obviously, the two-pod version is the belt and suspenders version that solves all your problems from an operational and growth point of view, but also is the most expensive. A single pod version will certainly work and will certainly be an improvement over what you currently have. And whichever version is selected, we feel confident that we can provide a project and a building that will meet all the needs for, for many years to come. So we're grateful to the commission and the sheriff Carpenter and Shalom and everybody else for the time they've spent with us and sharing their commission and we appreciate, I appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Appreciate that. I think we'll just move to some questions if anybody has any questions, any concerns, any, it's not a public hearing by any means, but, but we do have staff here that, if they want to talk and, and, you know.
I have a question.
Okay. Will you come up?
I've got a lot of questions here.
Okay.
Just really questions on the.
State your name, please.
Scott Olm, sorry. What is in the pod support? The, those halls of B, because it said pod support, what goes in there?
Yeah.
And my other question I have to remember, I just lost it, but I'll come back to you.
Okay.
You want me to answer?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so the pod support, because these are, because they're two-story buildings, well, they're technically kind of almost four, but because they're multi-story buildings, we have stairs, elevators, mechanical shafts and other ancillary functions. So we just.
It's not offices leading.
No, 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 it's, it's, it's just, it, it can also be the sally ports to let them out to the yards depending on where the yards are. Sometimes the yards are, we use the pod and building to create two of the, two of the walls to the yard so that sometimes inmates go out through that connector, sometimes they go out through. It's, it's just kind of.
It's annoying. My next question is, if you go with the one-pod option, where would the female inmates go and does that provide the proper security for the female inmates?
Where they're actually located ultimately is the decision of the sheriff and the jail commander. Where we have a two-story arrangement, it's probably, I mean, it, it stands to reason that perhaps the females would be on one level and the males could be on the other level. We, we have other facilities, Kane County is, is one of them and Uena County does this too where they're all in the same pod, but they may have added some additional demising walls where they brought these walls out to, to the central, central core and created kind of a pod, pod within a pod, if you will. But it is, it is somewhat problematic because the idea with the programming space, the med days and the, some of the programming spaces, that's for all inmates. So you still have to solve the segregation and the visual break issue, but it can be done.
Say your name.
Yes, I'm Cheryl Wicker. I'm actually a resident right there, so most of my concerns are, are about that. So how many trips, and maybe this year I'll have to answer this, how many trips would be made per year to doctors and courts and what, what's the estimate of how often that happens if, and then opposed to if the medical facility is in the pod and then if a court was in the pod? So how many, about how many trips would you say you make to take people out of the jail?
Yep. From a medical standpoint, as far as the hospital itself, it's for critical incidents. We have medical staff in the jail, so we've got, we have a registered nurse and advanced EMTs that are in the medical staff that will deal with the day-to-day medical issues. But anytime that there's anything like currently, anything like dental issues or serious medical issues, anything like that, then we have to transport them out. And, you know, we don't have the funding to be able to fund a doctor and a full medical staff, that's not going to change. We're still going to have to take a lot of those folks out. But as far as on dental and things like that, we can bring a dentist in, be able to treat him if we have those types of medical facilities within the jail. As far as the transport courts, that's, I mean, that's all the time. And a lot of it just depends on the court schedule. So because of coronavirus, a lot of that's been done through web court and things of that nature. We don't know whether Utah courts is going to continue that when we kind of get back to full purpose. And a lot of, now that the courts are opening up more frequently, we're, we're doing transports pretty close to every day except for. pretty close to every day except for weekends.
So, do you know how many critical instances there were in Iron County in the past year so that we could kind of get a?
Do you have a number for that, Shalung?
I don't, we, we do do.
I mean, are we talking like a thousand or, oh!
No.
Or like?
Shalung, could you come over?
I mean, I don't even know ballpark, right? Are we talking hundreds or thousands or?
As far as critical incidents, I would say that you're probably in more of a 10, 10 per year range. We do have routine medical that we go offsite for, and we also do a dental run once a week. So, if, if we have inmates that need to go to the dentist, we, we transport them to the medical facility once a week. We do have, we do have a doctor that comes in once a week, so we don't have to take our inmates out every week to go to the doctor, and they come in, and we also have our, we have the therapist that comes in once a week, so we don't take them offsite for that. But as far as, like, pregnant, pregnant inmates and that kind of stuff, we do have to take.
Which could be a facility, too.
One thing on that, too, is that in the, in the medical aspect of a portion of the building, in the support area, it, it's common to put a dental chair in, kind of have a small procedure room, so a dentist can be brought in, and even, you know, things like haircuts and simple things, but it, but ultimately comes down to, you know, available providers for that.
Okay. So, but wouldn't it make sense then to have a court facility within the pod so that we could reduce those transfers as well?
That, that's all under the Utah State Department of Courts. That's entirely up to them.
We have your chapter.
We have our chapter.
Well, I would recommend that as a person that lives right there, that that would be great to eliminate that transfer. If transfers are truly where it's scary, is, I would like that, you know.
That's part of the reason, that's part of the reason that we're looking at that large of a parcel property, is because ultimately, we would like to encourage the Utah Courts to move the Fifth District Court and the Iron County Justice Court.
They do think that's feasible.
Not, not today, it's not, but eventually I think it will be, because currently, the Fifth District Court has three courtrooms. They've used up every bit of space that they have in the current Fifth District Court. But as it is today, they can only hold one jury court at a time because they have no place to sequester their jurors, so they have to use one of the other courtrooms to sequester their jurors. As the county continues to grow, they're going to quickly outgrow the current courthouse.
And so, that's what you're wanting, that, that front area will be public buildings, courts, things like that?
Right, so, so.
And these are places that won't provide, that, that won't pay taxes, is what I'm getting at.
Right, on that particular, on that particular parcel property. Nothing will extend out past that parcel property.
I, I wonder.
Can I, I thought you were moving to another, so I wanted to say something before you move on, but.
I was going to say, and probably we won't even borrow all that property, but we want to make sure that we have the room that we need for the things that we need to provide.
Right.
So, I was going to say, we have talked to.
Could you tell us your name?
The courts, Dan Jessen, Iron County Auditor, and we have talked with the courts, they're saying that they're happy, they have a limited budget on, on real estate expansion and things like that. Now, to give you an idea of their mindset, they want to be as close to city center as possible.
Right.
And that's one of their main things, so as we've been looking at sites, we've wanted to stay close enough that we could, we could incentivize them to come out and still be within that criteria of city center. And the main reason is, is because they want to be accessible to the public, it comes to the courts, they don't want to be way out. But we don't have, we really don't have any, any ability to make them come, we would just like them to come. It helps us for, for them to be close to us, but that's not really part of what goes into their thinking. Now, one thing I do want to say is they did just purchase land around the court, in fact, we bid against them, because we have our justice court and they have their district court, they just bought the land to the south and to the east in a recent auction, maybe three years ago, was when Dale Rengerhoff was still on the commission for you to go. How long you been here, Paul?
It's been six years ago.
So, they have acquired land there, we would like to have them come, so when it comes time for them to do something else with their building, I think it's going to take an entire community effort to try to put as much pressure on them to co-locate near us as possible. They won't take, so we're going to use the back 15 acres for this, we will own the entire parcel. We're going to keep that open to see if we can get them to come. Now, let's say that they go ahead and they decide to stay pat, let's say stand pat, say they expand, and unfortunately, we can't get them to come out. At that point, if we have not utilized that space for anything else, we could use it for something government, we could turn over that, we could turn that back, sell it to commercial land, I mean, that is miscellaneous, could be used for whatever, even if they locate out there, maybe they've taken an acre for their building, it's not like they're going to use up, you know, 25 acres out front.
So, would that just be, just sitting there for years and years and years while we decide?
Of course, it's going to sit there until we can find the best and highest use. The best and highest use may be for it to turn back to commercial land and be sold off, but we.
But the vision is to get everybody out there if you can, courts.
If we can get the courts out there, that's that number one priority of, of the counties. Short of that, is there another use that the county could use it for that would be a highest use? And if that isn't the case, and the highest use is to turn around and make that commercial land, then that, I mean, it will be zone commercial and will stay zone commercial, but it'll stay, what do you call that brown?
Greenfield.
Greenfield or something like that, of course, we'll keep it maintained so it doesn't look ugly or whatnot, but.
So, but the county will be in charge of that, we won't, we won't know what.
We'll own it until we can find the highest and best use. That's all I wanted to say.
All right. What's the purpose of the, oh, actually, you answered that, thank you. Oh, how many acres are available after the 38-acre parcel in the auto mall area, including the Tresslands? How many acres are left for commercial space after you remove that?
A lot.
Just the auto mall property?
Just how, how many acres of commercial space is, just taking out the 38?
Well, that's reference, that's a 37-acre parcel, so at least 100.
So, so with the, with the.
Where do you draw that line? Do you go south?
Right.
I mean, how far to the south do you go?
Probably to Main Street, probably to the, to the, Main Street by Loves.
There's a ravine that runs on the south, it's kind of a natural dividing line, it's, you can kind of tell that the foothills start, where the Cedar Street start.
I'm talking, right, these areas that could be commercial areas, this one that could be, so this is about 30 acres, and then what about this, what's the seven?
That's in the ground, we have, we have several here, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm there.
Oh, yay, Sitla.
It's, we have 80 acres adjacent to the south.
Okay. And what?
Well, so these are all, these are all commercially developed sites, or privately developed sites, and, I mean, I don't know what the individual acreage is, but those are all already available sites.
Also, on both sides to the south, and there is all commercial by Loves and both sides of those, I've got the property owners that are, that are wanting to sell for sure, and to the north of us also, I, I've talked to a gentleman that, that wants to use that for commercial also, so there's a lot.
There you go. All right, one more. Oh, can you show us in relation to the, the site, where the 20-acre parcel that is supposed, that is set aside for recreational and park use in the Fiddler's area? There's some confusion about where, where that is located.
I don't know where that is.
That's all by Cedar City, and it's, it's 40 acres. Here's, here's, here's the, I believe it's in here.
Is that it?
It's, there you go, where your hand is, right here, that's it. So, here's the Sitla 40 acres, Sitla 40 acres.
Sitla.
There's the Cedar City owned, this is owned by Linford Nelson, right here's the.
So, then the trail would, the existing trail would be right, right there, and then that parcel, is that right? You'll see them?
Yeah, that's, so, so I'm just, I just had my hand on that.
Yes.
This is BLM?
Right.
It's trying to get up there.
So, that's, in fact, that's, we've got a little bit more. So, BLM, Cedar City, Sitla, that's Linford Nelson, Fiddler's, that says Fiddler's, normally that's, yeah, that's private. And that's the parcel we're looking at, this is all the auto mall stuff.
Okay.
And then there's kind of a, the topography.
That's a big wash that goes down.
Yeah. It's probably not usable for still. Just going to show it out a little bit. Where are we? So, yeah, sorry, I made you shit there. So, here we are, this is, let me make sure. Okay. I normally can turn on parcels, but I don't have that right now. So, there's the parcel we're looking at, there's Sitla, there's the Cedar City piece, but as you can see, there's, there's kind of a, a knoll that runs down, and then there's a wash that runs through. There's been some discussion about what to do with this underpass and traffic flow, especially as it affects this intersection here. This is a bailing alley in the Maverick, if that, what are you driven about?
I was going to ask you to speak into a mic.
I don't have one. I should speak into a mic.
You state your name for the record, please.
John Whitaker, county clerk. I'll say what my son calls me.
Dad.
Dad, he calls me dad, lovingly. So, yeah, does that answer your question?
No.
No.
I wasn't quite sure, so you showed me some BLM land and then the Sitla parcel, but where is that, where is that part? It's right there. So, the BLM?
This, this is the Cedar, Cedar City Corporation is the set side.
So, it's right on the other side?
Yeah, so almost straight south from that east part.
So, I believe that'd be a mile to the edge, that's probably a section, wouldn't it be?
No, it's only a half mile to the nearest home when we walked in, so that would have to be about a quarter mile.
That's what we'd shake his head, a quarter mile?
What would that, roughly, what do I have?
Oh, hello. So, yeah, quarter mile is 2640, so that's a bit less. Yeah. Quarter's 17. Oh, yeah, 2640 is half a mile, so, yeah.
And what about the nearest, nearest home? So, quarter mile up to that, what about the nearest home?
Uh, let's see, so that's a little over half a mile, 2640 is half a mile.
Is there a policy of how close the jail could be to that nearest home or?
No, but that's a great point, so let's take a look at the existing jail. So, oh, I've lost myself. Thank you. So, there's the existing jail, and, I mean, there are homes there, so.
So, there's no, there's no sheriff and line on the one side, on the east side?
Say again.
They share a fence line on that east side?
Oh, yeah, oh, right here, yeah. Yeah, so there's the, that's the property line, the building itself, so that's, that back lot neighbor is the jail's back lot neighbor, so the answer currently is zero.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we have anybody else that has questions?
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Dixon Tiffany, for the record. We'll go back to that president. So, okay, so, the way I understand it, so you're talking about 50 million for one pod, 72 million for two pods. Okay, so this area here, does that include acquisition of the land?
I, I believe that's just construction costs.
That's right.
It may, yeah, not, not including yet land.
So, how much are we looking at to buy the purchase?
We haven't negotiated that yet.
Estimation?
We're, we're getting appraisals right now, and, and things will be based on appraisals.
But there's no estimation?
Not yet.
Okay, that's my question.
Thank you.
I have a question, I don't know who can answer it, but I'm, I'm sure the county would be very expensive improving this all to this side, and that's obviously going to enrich the property owners adjacent to that, whether we send one of Linford or whoever. What kind of arrangement can we make with the improvements, current other sidewalk utilities, so that when those property owners pull a building permit, we can recoup those investments the county's made? I don't know, Tyler, would that be something you can come up with?
That'd be great.
That's come up, and it's a really good point, so the city will enter, well, will facilitate a reimbursement agreement where it's on the books for 10 years, then any property, adjacent property owner that comes in will pay, put what that cost is for their section of benefit.
What triggers that? Is it the only pull ability permit?
It would be, it would be, well, we do it at final flat, so I think that, that's what would be the trigger, they start putting in those improvements, and then that's when that reimbursement comes to you.
So, what would happen after the 10 years? Nothing?
Nothing.
A lot of building would happen, right after 10 years.
That's exactly right. And we, you know, we've had the belt first come in and say, well, let's do it 30-year or 20-year, well, government's just not good at tracking things like that.
Is that state law or what is that?
No, that 10 years.
We've agreed with that.
That's city policy. And I should, I say policy, it's not written policy.
Procedure.
Yeah, it's just what we've done.
But, to, to be clear, both the city and the county would benefit from increased tax revenues from the development, I mean, it's not a zero-sum game.
Sure.
Tyler, while you're up here, I want to ask you a question.
Obviously, the, the improvements we put on the property that we purchase as a county, we can recoup that when we sell, obviously sell lots to commercial construction, but that would be, that's just something that's a lot of.
So, I just wanted to ask, and, and we do have, you know, planning commission here in some of the city council, and, and certainly if they have any technical questions, now is the time to ask those of our, of our guy we hired to do our usability study. I would, I'm calling the architect, but he's only an architect if he gets hired to be the architect, because right now he's, I'm just a guy. He's a guy, he's a guy. But, so, when it kind of comes down to implementation, if, or would we be able to transfer water shares that have been given to the city for the old jail to the new jail, if anyone's done with the old site? Is that administrative stuff that's got to be worked through, or is there clear policies in place? Maybe you could comment on it.
So, we'll, we'll need to work through that. It would depend what you're going to do with that old site. That's, that's going to be really important.
Can I ask one question while I'm up here? So, I have an interest in programming, are we going to have more space for programming in the new jail, which means more groups will go?
Very good, very good. Absolutely, yeah. We're very limited, come on up, Scott, we're very limited on that, on, on our programming, and Shalung tells us all the time that we have a lot of groups that want to come in and help, and we just don't have the, and so, that's definitely something that we're looking at more.
And I would like to ask Rob, how would that look, one pod versus two pod as far as programming?
If you can go to that overall diagram.
These or?
Yeah, this works. Yeah, so, well, actually, the one that had the two side-by-side color.
Okay.
Yeah, that one. So, in, in this, in this scheme, one of these was the male, and I think this one we designated male just for the sake of the conversation, this was the male pod, this was the female pod on the ground floor. On the upper floor of the male pod were more of those lower-risk, kind of, the eight-person bed, so there's three large cells instead of 12 smaller ones. Now, whether or not all that needs to be used is, you know, needs to be seen, but you could have some program space on the second floor in this pod. In the current scheme that we laid out, we, we left three more of the pods for the female inmates in the, in the more dorm configuration, but then we had chapel, and then we had four, we're calling it classroom program spaces, that are basically just multipurpose, day rooms that then had. Then we had chapel and then we had four, we're calling it classroom program spaces that are basically just multipurpose, uh, uh, day rooms that then have classrooms. So there's actually eight classrooms, four day rooms, so you know, you do group therapy, you do private classrooms. There's a, there's a lot of different things you can do. So in the event that you only went with one pod, you would have to accommodate the males and the females all in, all in the one pod and it would likely push, um, the medical, the chapel and the majority of the program space out to, uh, the support building. So this support element would probably be incrementally larger to accommodate that.
Hey, while you're explaining pods, can you explain how a two pod, a two story is really three stories? Because I think that maybe there's some confusion.
Yeah, so if you remember the, uh, if you go to that picture, uh, of that day room, I think it's the next slide.
Okay.
So the, the cells are stacked too high, so the ceiling in the day room is about twenty feet. So you really have a really tall, what's the equivalent of a two-story space? It only counts technically as one story, but it is the height of two stories. That can be repeated again on the top, or it could also be, uh, in the event of a, of an, if it's the eight-person cells, uh, you don't have to stack them too high. So there's, there's a lot of variables, especially at this point in the game, uh, but you really do end up with the equivalent of a three, three and a half story, uh, pod when, when it's built.
Most of the ones that we looked at when we looked at those other jails was just the one story on the top, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's what we did at Uena County. Yeah, Uena County, they did a dorm, a dorm arrangement on the upper, on the upper level, so it was only about fourteen feet tall, opposed to twenty in the, the level below.
Scott? All right. No, you're, you're fine. Well, twenty stories, I mean, quite deep, it's, uh, yeah, two stories or so. My question is, um, if you could go back to the math, sorry, and while I was bringing that up, one of my other questions is, when you were looking at the proposed sites, uh, because you can imagine since March fourteenth, we received a lot of emails and a lot of votes. My question is, did you look at any other industrial, uh, zone sites within Cedar City's area? But that's a question we're getting a lot. So I want to make sure that I get a clarification on that, so we have proper response back to our citizens. So that would be question number one. Question number two, has there been any interest, and maybe this is a question for a Sitla representative, uh, in the property that is there, the Husbands, the Cusman's, the Rangers, in that property recently? We, we have kind of a mic to say your name.
Thanks, Scott.
Hey, everybody. My name's Greg MacArthur. Um, I work for Sitla School Institutional Trust Lands Administration. Um, I'm, I'm relatively new there. I'm over the, um, Iron County area lands. Um, so to answer that question on the interest in this, uh, we constantly have developers looking and talking to us about these lands. In the last, so I've been with the organization for six months. Uh, in the last six months, I've probably had four development groups talk to us and say, hey, is that ready yet? Hey, we would love. So I don't know if everybody knows how we work with, typically what we do is when we have these large tracts of land, we pick, large developers reach out to us and then we'll partner with them. So we'll throw in the land and then they'll start developing. Um, so when it goes, it usually starts to go pretty quick. Um, we've just been waiting for this parcel. We're on a north intersection here in Cedar City and just as things grow, um, we don't have any holding costs on the land. And so just as time goes on, it gets worth more and more. And so we wait for the right time to re-lease it. So that's what we've been waiting for on these lands. So, uh, just to go a little bit further, if that's okay, um, so I actually just found out about, uh, the jail coming in just last Friday and I was pretty surprised that it hadn't been notified to the largest landowner adjacent. Um, I was so surprised to find that out. This definitely will affect what we can do on these lands. Um, in the nineties, no, I'm sorry, in the, in the two thousands, early two thousands, about two thousand five or six, there was a master plan done that Sitla participated in on this area, um, and it had mixed use and commercial and different things. Um, that land use plan clearly is now fifteen years old and the amount of growth that's happened in Cedar City and Iron County, it's way a long time ago. So we think it might be time to do something new. Um, what we would like and ask from Sitla would be, um, if this is the chosen, uh, location for the jail, is just to work with us, uh, to help us replan these lands out so we get the highest invest use. That's our entire goal. Um, Sitla School Institutional Trust Lands is, what we do is we sell and develop lands, so we get money and we try to get the most amount of money out of them, so we can give it to the school kids. That's what our whole intent and purpose is. Um, and so Sitla would be willing to get a national level or whoever we choose, developer, not developer, I'm sorry, planner, to do a planning for this area. Um, another thing that I was thinking that we could maybe look at, because of the city, since we have city and county representatives here, is this Cedar City Corporation, that was a Sitla parcel. That was traded, that's forty acres. We traded it for four acres, um, back in two thousand eighteen to help a, a development that's going down in the southern end of Cedar City, the Iron Horse Development. And we put a deed restriction on that that says it has to be used for a park, so that's the only thing it could be used for right now. If we wanted to, if we think for the city, and again, we, this is just discussion, I'm going to just throwing things out there, but we try to plan for this. Um, if we think that there might be better development that happens here on the Utah Trust State lands as we do a master plan, we'd be willing to swap some of this to make a buffer that goes between that and then release the deed restriction so the city can do whatever they want with it, keep a park or do something else, but just ideas. That's all I'm looking for is just as we have this, um, as I just found out about it, we'd love to work with the city and the county to make this a great success up in that area with our lands. We're open to do whatever, um, people would like to do.
Since you know this topic, putting a prison in that area, is that going to promote commercial, restaurant, housing developments or is it going to keep processing?
So, um, I'd like to have a. Sure, historically. Um, I think, you know, the one answer I, I could have is currently, so if I look at the plan, I brought the old plan. We had like, um, residential units right there that were like, uh, commercial on the bottom, residential in the top. I don't think you get that there right now. There would need to be a buffer between, as, as, for planning purposes. And so I think you can have to have some type of trade commercial, but if you get a, a little bit of a buffer area, get a street or so between there, street or two, then you can have residential go in. Um, but I think the key is to get a really good plan for it. Um, if we have a good plan going forward, then as the developers, really large developers that might want to look at this going forward, that we would partner with, we could say, here's, here's the plan that we have, here's the zoning and here's what we have, and I think they would, they'd be okay with it. But I think it just needs to be planned.
We, we've actually found with the other facilities that we've designed that, um, more developments coming around the facilities after they've been built, because typically the jail has to bring in, uh, new utilities and things like that. But sometimes that's the, uh, you know, the stumbling, the stumbling point for somebody to develop around them. The, the brand new prison site, uh, up in Salt Lake, it's way out in the booties, east, east and north of the airport. There's already industrial paths being graded and, uh, constructed right next door to the prison, which was put way out, away from everybody on purpose, because all those utilities were now brought out to those sites and made, that made those sites developable.
Washington County is a good example of that also. Um, they put that, their jail facility out purgatory for a reason. And they built all around it. They have a huge, uh, fairground complex, racetrack, uh, uh, the four H is there now, the extension office. So, you know, it brings in the, the development. We've seen it over and over and over again.
After Scott's done, maybe.
Oh, yeah.
For the responses.
What was your first part of your question?
It was so long ago. I can ask, I remember it, Scott. So when we were looking originally, we were looking at places that were already zoned, um, and that were for sale. And the only other site that we could get that was close to city center, again, trying to consider all these factors, was the Smeed site. Is that primarily because of acreages, eight plenty available? Yeah, thank you.
I just had a question.
Can you tell your name?
Oh, Terry Harley, I'm with the Cedar City Council. Um, I've had a lot of questions about the recreational land that Cedar City corporate. You said that you would release the deed restrictions, but there's been a lot of question, you own other land, excuse me, those closer to Main Street. Would you be willing to make further trade or not for something that's more removed from that jail site?
So that's a great, great question. Um, as long as, what we do is, if we're trading, first of all, we want to work with municipalities and make sure that we get the best outcome for the municipality. But, um, when we look at trading things, we look at values. So we usually try to trade value for value. So if the value on Main Street could equal what we think the value of this will be based on appraisals, then we'd, we'd open to trading, um, that type of thing. Something we'd be willing to look at.
I just wanted to point out that one thing that we do have is, um, is the old jail site that we are also looking for the highest invest use and can factor into this entire discussion. We, we are committed to not leave a hulk of a building sitting there and turning into another old hospital. That could be, that could be utilized for commercial space, that could be utilized for, um, I even heard somebody throw out the other day, park space, whatever the case may be. It could be, it could be re, remodeled and utilized for county administration. It could be, you know, whatever, but that can be part of this negotiation and, and, not negotiation, but part of, part of the discussion.
What's the acreage on that?
Seven acres.
One of the things that came out from our, uh, several public hearings was the concern about not having park space on the north end. I would suggest that as the, whatever that consideration happens between Cedar City and Sitla, that, that, uh, thrust from the citizens there who spoke out in our public hearings be considered.
One of the questions that came up was that we, did we consider other sites within the city and what, yes, we did. We considered the site by Smeed, it was already zoned, I, I am in on, which allows for a jail to be built on, but, uh, the biggest factor there, and not that they're bad soils, but they, you would have to do about an eight foot over X. And when you over X eight feet, you lose about forty percent of your soil and it's already in a little bit of a flood plain and it's lower than the road. So you would have to bring a lot of material, an excavator, to look at that site, so it would be extremely expensive. In fact, he called me last night, Phil Schmidt, I thought he was going to be here, but he must have had a, they, he called me last night and just said, for the record, he lives in Fiddler's Canyon and he thinks the, the site we're looking at is far and by far the best site for a lot of reasons, but mainly, in his opinion, because he's an excavator, these are the soils are the best there for this purpose. It's really good. It's gravelly, it's got a good base. And they're very, these buildings are very heavy. They've heard large footings, large, lots of steel in the, in the concrete. And so the better the soil, the less expensive it is to build. Is that correct? Yes, it is.
Any other questions?
Oh.
Oh, let's.
In your experience with the, uh, Uena side, main county side, has there been commercialization coming around that some of the?
Tell your name, please.
Uh, Uena County is, uh, that building right there that you see, uh, on the screen. It's just off the main drag, um, uh, I forty that goes through, it's just to the south of that. It's kind of set back in there, uh, so it, it doesn't have a, a street frontage, so there isn't commercial right next to it, but it, it sits in a pocket that's surrounded on all sides. You know, the, our firm actually, there's a, oh, Google.
You're making it sick.
Yeah. So, uh, yeah, and if you, if you zoom out just a little bit, you have the, the county complex, which is to the lower left where the horse track is. That's where all the, the fairgrounds and everything is. I forty is the street that goes through and then angles down. Just to the, you have the Split Mountain Youth Center, which is the, the juvenile detention. And then the next building over with the white roof is the, is the district court. The, the courtroom that's in the Uena County jail is the county court and that's that rectangle that the mouse is basically hovering over right there. But, um, they actually, um, have a pathway where they just kind of go out the back way to take the inmates to the, to the district court. But they also use video arrangement, which was discussed earlier by, by the sheriff, so. And, and the site we're, that we're talking about, it, the reason why the building is also pushed to the back fifteen acres is, yeah, the way the demography worked, you know, it, it does slope up, but it also kind of flattens out, it kind of up and back there. The idea was to get it back off the road and to not have the, not have any of the good street frontage, taken up by the jail and to leave that for future development, the auto mall site. We do a significant amount of retail, uh, design for, um, R.C. Willie and other, other, uh, large retailers, as well as tons of restaurants. And, uh, it's very specific with those, um, you know, grocery stores, restaurants, uh, they, they run very, uh, they have algorithms that they run. It, it comes down to, to rooftops and, and bodies within certain radii, or they don't care how much you want it, they're not putting a store, um, unless it meets their criteria.
They would put a store back that far.
Yeah, you will, and, and it's all, you always, frontage and visibility, uh, the last two R.C. Willies, we, we did one in length and that's right at the ball, it's practically on the freeway. And then we're doing another one in Idaho Falls that's basically more on a site much like the auto mall site where it's at, at an intersection of a freeway. So visibility, um, street frontage, traffic is highly important for retailers. You know, you need to remember too, that when you have a functioning, uh, jail plus the sheriff's office, plus potential third, third-party agencies, you could have a couple hundred people a day that work there and most people need coffee and sandwiches and places to eat and, um, you find that, uh, that helps.
How do we get Bill to come up and? Did he? Oh, there he is. Yeah, come on, come on in. We, we just wanted you to talk about the site and how you felt about it.
Which one?
The side.
Yeah. Yes, let's.
You gotta go to the mic, buddy.
That's true.
State your name.
Right now, move that system a little bit. This for you, Scott. Phil Schmidt, Schmidt Construction. The, uh, the county and I, I talked a little bit about different sites, uh, through this and, and we met out there with all the commissioners. The first site was over by Smeed and part of the problem with the Smeed site was that there's been a wide zone for the airport. We cannot have overnight staying on, on a big piece of that property. The other part of that property, there's, uh, there's probably over a thousand lots of subdivisions being designed and being started and working on. And, uh, another thing with that property is there is very little drainage. The, the drainage is, is, it's almost flat in that area. And with that ground that's there, um, you're going to have to go at least six to ten feet below footing to, uh, support the structure of it. A house, even with the house, if you cut that lighter than these, you have to go six foot below bottom footing for, uh, overexplanation on, on that side. And there's, the, the drainage is, uh, being worked on, but it's very marginal over there. So they went out, I went out with them to look at this site.
Back out, yeah.
The Fiddler's?
So we, we talked about Smeed, I didn't talk to them about out, out in Valley. You showed the.
Whatever.
This side, yeah. Okay. We went out, we looked at this. I've, uh, I've taken material out of here. We, we used it when we built some franks on the video, a part of this pit back here, we taking material out of that. You'll have to follow the soil report and I'm sure there'll be a little bit of over X on this site. It's not as rocky as over, uh, by Nichols Canyon Road. But the, the view of this site, it has great drainage potential. It has a lot more sewer capacity. The sewer line goes down and goes under the. The sewer line goes down and goes under the freeway. Go back to that.
Is that a big one?
Yeah. Okay, right over there is a box culvert and that's where the sewer line goes through. And so Main Street is already pretty full. That, that'll actually, they'll have good sewer access. They have great drainage. There's a box culvert there, freeway goes on over into Eany. They can put a nice pond. The property has salt. It's not as bad as what you might think because if you go five or six hundred feet, and I think there's forty, eighty, twenty-five different feet of elevation. If you go a six hundred foot site and run two percent, that's saltwater already that you got, you should put in. And so the site, the thing that I liked about this site is I think the dirt's better, the access is better for all the people, the utilities are better. There's, there's fiber, there's great drainage here. This gets back pretty close to a drainage easement anyhow, so nobody's going to build right there anyway. I don't even think you can. And with this here, the drainage here goes right on out that way. The other part that I like about this, and I haven't really said much about it, but the city owns property over here for a future recreational area. Right now, there's no utilities to that area and the city's going to have to go and fix all that. But if we could utilize a little bit of the jail on that side road coming up and put in water, sewer up that road, that would help get it quite a bit closer, plus the power and everything else. So I think, I think we could use it to benefit also, not only put the jail there, but also help to get utilities, water net back closer to our recreational site. And any excess dirt that comes off of this site should be placed on the recreational site because there's no dirt. So I think, I think a little bit of planning and so forth and communicating back and forth, I think that the county and the city and recreational people could actually help two things. It makes a great location for the jail, but also I think it could benefit the town as far as the recreation site too. It's something that helps get the utilities back there.
Will you talk about where you live? We don't have to say exact.
We, 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 we live up right there on Pithill's Drive, a few. You go up over here, I can show you. We're, we're right between Nichols Canyon and Pithill's Road, right before you get to the Ashdown.
Anyway, in there somewhere.
You don't have to say exactly. I'm just saying.
I can't even note who's here. Anyway, we, we live right there. We helped build the Fiddler's Canyon deflection structure so the development could be built down below that. We built the bottoms. We did a lot. We used to do all the franks, working out, does a lot of that, breaks off the belt and stuff. The deflection structure is, is good. I think that will help with future development. As you go further that way, until somebody comes up and comes up to put another road in, there's no more development allowed over there until somebody puts roads. The access is only eighty lots. And right now, there, there has to be two roads and there is. And so there, there's really no more development goes here until it's really some major development, somebody else brings in some more roads so that they have double access. Because right now, they don't have.
Any other questions for jail, for net, for in our community? So we appreciate you.
I think, I think it's a, it's a good thing. Right there where they're going in the back is a, is a big canyon. Well, you couldn't build there anyhow, and I think it's far enough back that it's actually going to be fine. And I, I like what they're proposing in front of our block there. Open that to the streets that way.
So Dan Jessen had a suggestion. The sheriff did a flyover with the drone and they did it at seventy feet above ground and then a hundred feet above ground. And you can kind of see just, well, what you can't see, which is to say that the home's there. I don't know if you want to speak anymore to that sheriff. So that's looking northwest and that's just rotating clockwise.
The idea being that you could be potentially on the roof of the building at seventy-five feet, depending on how high the building is or a hundred feet.
So right there, that's the pit that's been talked about, looking almost straight north now.
So when you're looking south or looking southwest, what you see, that's also what you see in jail. Because it is a tough, a little bit of a divot down in there.
That is the drainage too, right before that slope.
Yeah.
That's where the drainage channel is.
So it'll never be dealt on there.
Now you're almost straight east. And this is at seventy feet. We'll show it again at a, they flew it again at a hundred feet. That's the mouth of Fiddler's Canyon right there.
And Dan, you wouldn't, the roof wouldn't be much higher than fifty feet.
Yeah. So this is already, so that is looking into Fiddler's. Pause that. All right. Then almost straight south, back toward Lowe's now. And then, so this is the.
Same thing that hired.
Yeah.
Yeah, the three-story, the three-story office part, which is the jail, the sheriff's office.
This gives you a little more geology as, as we're talking.
You're, you're likely fourteen foot floor to floor and by the time you do stuff, you know, you'd be around fifty, fifty-five feet tops.
So you're talking about maybe we cut that down to twelve feet.
Well, you've got about, you've got about twenty-five feet you've got to make up on the other. But you can cut the sale, but you know, you could, if you, you gotta, you need to have at least two percent go across anyway. The way your parking lot, they have to drain down. And everything's going to drain to the north.
Yeah, the building on the south side will be down.
What I'm saying is if it's, if we're considering fifty feet down, of course, is that fifty feet down by the pond or?
Yeah, it's.
The thing is though, that property comes up, the property comes up quite a bit, but what they're, what they're showing here with the drone, even with the fifty foot lift.
So that's a hundred feet and you can start to see the roofs and ash down.
When, when you're standing up there, you'll see at the site, is it, you, you can't barely through the trees, see the very top of that gigantic love sign, the gas station prices. When you're back in there, you're tucked down in and you, you can barely see the top of it if you look through the trees. That's standing at ground level.
And the reason we've, we've kind of emphasized is there was a lot of concern about, you know, initially there was the auto mall site and there was concern about visibility. This site isn't going to be very visible and that's kind of what these drone by aspect is at. So as you, and it continues to happen. There's the love sign right there. Yeah. So the freeway is right there. So you get visibility, what would you say, Paul, just from, when you're looking straight southeast for like two seconds on it? I mean, I don't know. Well, yeah, okay. But from the freeway, it'd be southeast. Yeah.
I've just been concerned about, that's the first thing we're going to see is a jail. I don't think now.
Let me ask a quick question, Jenny. When you're talking about the line of sight, is there any issues that you have with any other facility with noise or light going into the surrounding communities?
Yeah, that's a good question. The answer is no, because all the other facilities we've designed, we, we design as dark skies facilities. So all the lighting on the site is downlights and, and even the perimeter lighting, if we, if a true dark skies design, you're not allowed to have any of your light go over your property line. So the reality is, is that they're very quiet facilities too, because even though they have outdoor recreation, it's not, it's not rowdy out there.
Would this one be designed as a dark sky?
Yeah, that's the intent because, you know, one of the things about rural communities is, I mean, you guys have much nicer sky at night than I do at sunlight because it's been ruined. Yeah. Well, yeah. And, and, you know, the, the goal here is to, to, to make as little impact as possible and to be good neighbors. So the intention would be to design it that way, yes.
What about machine gun towers and spotlights?
Yeah.
Oh, you asked me half tongue in cheek.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I, we, we like the old stolid thirteen aesthetic, but what you're seeing there on the screen is a good example of what they actually look like. We designed the buildings to not look like Alcatraz. They're, they're meant to be, to blend in, to look like professional office buildings. And, you know, the, the reason why the rec yards are enclosed and kind of put in the back is because, you know, we're intentionally not trying to call attention to ourselves.
Um, but one other thing is, it sounds like as a city and a county, we have an opportunity right now with Silla and the city property to make a really good plan. We just got through the general plan. I don't think any of this was, we could talk about, you know, keeping this corridor as, as commercial, but has anybody taken the lead on doing that coordination? Because it's going to have some really specific and really great communication necessary. So don't have to answer that question now. I just wanted to make the point that there's a lot of entities involved here and I hope that that communication is.
Sure. Actually, I think it's important to know that for us, we've been looking at sites, we were offered the auto mall site by the owner and then this other site became, we became aware of it. So. We're really not as far along the process as you might think.
We haven't purchased the property.
Yeah.
And we, yeah, yeah.
But it's a point well taken though to, to, to make sure.
We have the B L M guy. Did you want to say something?
The gentleman's been waiting for a while.
Okay. Come on now. No, 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 come on. Say your name.
My name is Gary Suter. I live on, I'm going into town. I came late to meet him. I apologize for that. So we, you know, some of this, I, be ready. But looking at your general evaluation, the Smeed site is one point away from your current location that you're proposing. And I, alls I hear, you're pushing all the positives. The northern town is underdeveloped and I was frustrated to hear that from the Silla representative that it's been fifteen years since the county or city or whoever is responsible for that has even looked at the northern town to see how it can be developed. Well, that's what I said. Well, that's what I heard.
That was the last time they made an agreement with Cedar City on that land. But, but the private development, ethnic development.
So you're looking at it in less than fifteen years. Yeah, that's okay. My point is, is that south of the town is to the point where it's overwhelming. You know that. We all know that, right? So why, why would we want to put this in the northern town? Well, what I'm hearing is, oh, if we put it there, then all these stores are going to come and everything's going to be wonderful because there's hundreds of people working there. Well, then go put it out at the Smeed sign where there's thousands of homes, I understand, being developed. And we talked about excavation issues, unknown costs. The excavation of this is estimated to be X. The Smeed site is estimated to be Y. You don't know. And until you get in there and do that, I, I just don't see how there's a positive impact on the northern end of town, putting hundreds of prisoners there. I can see how you can alleviate some of the concerns that I've heard thus far, travel, dental, judicial issues. Video conferencing works quite well. Most large companies use it now. It's an accepted legal aspect, just like electronic signatures are. I don't see that's even an issue. You have some form of medical there, other than extreme cases is what I've heard, is that's the only time these people be, be trapped, we have to travel. So that is an impact that I think. When they go there, they're going there for a pretty long time. I'm not familiar with what your current jail holds. How many people can you hold in your current sheriff's location?
At one eighty, we're pretty full. Our, our housing.
One hundred and eighty?
We currently can house two fifty-six, but at one eighty, we're pretty squished. And it's because we don't have, so the, this new design of jails, I always say it's like Christmas because of the segregation options. We have a housing area right now, but ninety-six inmates are housed in one area. So that makes it where segregation options are not possible. So yeah, about one eighty and that's where we are sitting right now. We're completely squished. Do you have another question?
No, no, that's fine. Then.
You haven't looked at our other informational meetings. Have you, have you seen those?
I, I have some of them and I've read some articles and things that I've tried to educate myself, but as best I can. It sounds like there's a lot.
Came out in that, that.
Yeah, there's a lot of unknowns.
Well, a lot of these issues we addressed in our February eighth and February twenty-second meeting and in the March fourteenth meeting. I mean, it's, they're, they're, they're certainly valid concerns, but we, we have, we've been working on making this public knowledge for some time. So, yeah.
Right. Oh, sorry. Can I touch on the judicial part of your question? I just remembered that you spoke about that. Is there are some proceedings that can be handled through WebEx? So through electronically, there are some proceedings that we still have to do in person. So we have to transport inmates for the in-person court and that's, that's decided by the court. That's not decided by us. If the court says inmate needs to be there, we have to get them there. And there's some that are mandatory that the inmates have to be there.
And I appreciate that. I just, I just don't see that as a primary justification for the location.
Well, it's travel. It is a justification for that. Because it's close to the court because we do have to. Anyway, do you have another question?
Well, I, I guess my, my point is, is that what, what other, there's been a lot of effort made to decide we want to put a prison here. As a prison. A holding facility, a correctional facility, whatever. Ultimately, it's been that, that much effort towards looking at how else this place can be developed. I, I understand where, where are we going with this office? What I hear is there's this major push to spend, spend money on this here, which is fun. I have no argument with the.
Danny.
I have no argument with the design of your facility. I have a, a concern about the location of the facility. So stay, stay there. Danny, could you come up? So it's been twenty years since auto malls have been developed and nothing's happened. Danny, could you talk, could you come up to the mic and speak about what's happened since we've kind of been talking about?
Just nothing has gone on.
Danny Stewart is our economic development director.
Thank you. And I, it's interesting the timing. I stepped out to take a call about this topic. So I missed some of the discussion leading up to this, but you're right, that area has been designed for some time. I focused effort on marketing that, fairly heavily to the extent that we, that we do promote retail development here in the town. And we haven't had any takers. And really what it comes down to is the community hasn't met the demographic requirements. We don't have a good population. The population we do have doesn't have the income requirements that a lot of these large anchors are, are interested in. The last two or three years, retail development has really been pretty stagnant with, with COVID and everything else. Coming out of, of the pandemic, we're getting more interest, especially with the rapid growth. We've had six point two percent in the county for twenty twenty-one. And we're starting to get some interest in different things. I, I mentioned, I mean, recently that my first concern when I saw the map that came out that had a star right by the freeway and said Auto Mall Drive, it panicked me a little bit. Yeah, that didn't sit well with me. I thought I was spending a lot of time. So if you need any consulting on map design. Anyway, I just for my own information, because this is not a topic that I have a lot of expertise in, I've reached out to my state partners, Governor's Office of Economic Development, Economic Development Corporation of Utah, and then some different development companies within the state to ask them, how is construction of a correctional facility going to impact my ability to recruit commercial to this area? And I was just on the, on a call with somebody who was replying to that just now.
Uh, this is a large developer. They've done a lot of stuff all over the state. They're working on some big things in Saint George area in Kamua right now. And he said, it all comes down to those main things that stores and restaurants want. Is our market there? Can we make money? If there is a correctional facility there, to them, it's, it's another building. Because it creates foot traffic, because they're, you know, they don't have a concern about safety, security, anything else. So, I, I've gotten this response from three different development groups now, is the type of building isn't as important as the market for that area that's proposed. I've focused all of my efforts on this north interchange because we all are familiar with what's going on in the south interchange. But the groups, the retail groups I've talked to want to go where the action is. And they see a lot of action at Providence Center. That's where they want to go. I have had calls since it was announced the commission voted on this site, that I've never had before, calls asking about the viability of commercial on that site. That's not saying that something's guaranteed, but I've had people come to me in the last two weeks who are interested in, in learning more about that site. I've met with some personally. I've tried to set appointments with others in the twenty weeks. I don't know if that answers the question, but that's my experience. So far, my main concern is I don't want this announcement to hamper my job in trying to, to recruit retail to this part of town.
I guess I just reflect back. And what I'm hearing is development of the, the street site, may, and the purchase price of that, maybe less than the location that you're looking at now. We don't know that at this point. We haven't done the numbers yet. Um, again, I don't mind if you're holding people. I understand that we have people out there and we have our share of them. I just, I want to see this personally as, as an area that's developed, much like the south side. I, until we can get an anchor store in there, I, I don't know, but be a Costco or a Tmart, Walmart, whatever, again. We just don't have that there. And I guess I understand the income and, and numbers of people too. If you have Bieber, Midasville, Delta, people would come that far for a store like a Costco I'm having in town. If they're, um, that's ready. I, I just don't, what I hear is people pushing the, the design.
Well, and if I, if I could speak to that, I've been quiet over here.
Could you tell us, Mike?
No, thanks. So we, my, one of my other responsibilities on the commission besides public safety is economic development. I work really closely with Danny and we have a really great team. Um, and we, we've been focusing for years on the, trying to get these bigger companies, these box stores, these anchor type stores, to understand that our demographic isn't Cedar Valley, that it's Lincoln County, that it's Beaver County, that it's Garfield County. That it, we, you know, as far away as Richfield or where our shoppers come from. And so far, it hasn't worked. With that being said, we, we do have a, uh, we're able to fund a, a pretty major retail analysis study that's going on right now. And has been. And that is our strategy, to be able to hopefully get some solid numbers of the people that do come into our area from outside and to shop here. And so that we can more effectively make those arguments. We have argued that point until we're blue in the face, that, that Cedar City is not our shopping, our, our regional shopping area. It's the five county area and even into Nevada. But that, you know, we're hopeful that that study, it, it was, they actually commissioned it prior to COVID. And we're hoping that it would be done and the analysis all back and everything. COVID screwed us up and we kind of had to start over. But we are in the middle of that, marketing. We, we are in the middle of that marketing study now, and that marketing study is specifically designed to try and attract people to that market.
And we're, we're, for the first time, if I understand correctly, we're identified as the number one micro metropolis. Based on an article that I read, uh, opening a thousand new homes a year or more. We're certainly, every council meeting I see, we're certainly allowing homes to go all over the place. If the city wants to, wants to promote growth in an area, I, and you know better than me, you promote it in that area. You, you go ahead and, and say on, and street in, or whatever the secondary access is required. Again, this is my, my perspective based on the, the information I've been able to glean from the news. Right. Out here, and being at the SITL representative, gave us the last Friday that this was proposed. I, I can see that there may be some shortcomings in that area. But here regardless, um, I urge you, Sydney, not to rezonate. So that's, that's my case. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Let's, let's, uh, say your name.
I'm Dave Dakersen. I'm with the Cedar City BLM. And we just wanted to make, uh, the commission aware of some of our plans in this general area, along with the Cedar City Corporation. Uh, we acquired this land for recreation. We started looking at trails in this area as well. So we started last fall designing and starting to look at a large trail network to the east of this location and possibly co-locating our trailhead with the Cedar City Park or something in that, uh, respect. Or at least having access to the BLM land so that we can build a trail out of there. So if you can imagine some kind of trail or trail network similar to this, Trail to the Southview, uh, trailhead, uh, to the east of this, that's kind of what we're planning. And we just wanted to make you aware of that's where we're aiming, uh, for the use of BLM in your backyard.
That's, that's awesome. We're thrilled with that, especially because we feel like that's a really, right next to our sheriff's office. Very safe. We have the sheriff's coming and going and should be a very safe, good place to have recreation. Yeah, one more. Let's, let's take just this one more and then we probably ought to get out there and look at the side.
Thank you so much. Uh, my name is Heather Solley. And, um, I just have a couple of questions. So one of the questions that I have is, um, so is, is my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding that, um, the, the current site that you're looking at, it, it was brought forward by the landowner in exchange for land out by the landfill, for the landfill claim. Is that correct?
Not. Can I talk to that?
Yeah.
Let me, let me ask you my complete question, and then you can clarify everything.
Awesome.
So, um, because the, the question that was brought to my attention was just wanting a little more clarification about the details of that trade. Um, and if there's anything beyond like a land, like equal land for land trade or if there was anything else involved in that.
Okay. My drink's gone. So, uh, at this point, so there has been, there, there has been talk of a trade. At this point, that's talk. What we're doing right now, uh, the process that we're in right now is getting, uh, thank you, the A, the, the A word. Getting an appraisal, uh, not only on that piece of property, but on the property that, that the county owns out near Iron Springs. Where, uh, Mr. Nichols owns arsenals in both places. Uh, we've not come to any agreement on a trade. It, it's a possibility, but right now it's just too early in that process. We've got to see, you know, our, our offers and the money that we spend and trades that we make are going to be based on, on actual appraisals. And we're just barely starting that process now. So we, we just don't have those numbers yet. Um, we would hope to probably in the next few weeks, maybe be able to answer that question better. You know, a, as is now, uh, we're prepared to pay, uh, a fair market value without any trade. A trade may be possible. We're not closing the door to any options.
We want some trade. It's possible to reduce our cash or cost.
Right. So we're, we're in the middle of that. We're gonna, we're gonna, the, the bottom line is we're gonna try, get the best bang for our buck because it's taxpayer money. And it's really important that we treat it as such.
And Mike, just, um, I don't like that. Yes, declare, I, when I first was first elected, I, I wanted to go over out there. I feel we picked out the sewage issue and the sheriff law, I wanted to be so far out that I'd asked Frank, because we own that property right across from this hotel and I thought the Audi park. And he said, uh, I said, well, could we trade that for a piece maybe around the corner? He said, just put it there. I'll find out there. So just to clarify any rumors that Frank didn't want it there and was trying to wheel and belt some deal. He was fine with it right there.
All right. So I would be, I would be really interested in finding out, you know, what's, it, it does seem like there are a lot of numbers that are still out there we don't have. So I'd be really interested in, you know, in finding out more when we get that, those details, you know, appraisals. When we find out the, um, how much it would cost, the site evaluations, the comparisons. And I think that, you know, taxpayers and citizens should have access to that information. So I would really appreciate that.
So from this point forward, so the, and, and the way that this kind of came about, you know, I mean, there was a lot of talk, there was a lot of rumors, there was a lot of information floating around, a lot of misinformation that kind of started before we had any answers. And that's why we haven't had any meetings. I mean, we literally were just having discussions. We had nothing concrete. As soon as we started to have concrete information, that's when we started our public meetings. But I would commit to you that from this day forward until the jail is built and we're all out of this discussion, that we'll continue having these public meetings. We'll make that information absolutely available. Uh, we're gonna do a really good job at keeping all the information on our website. But we're gonna schedule these information meetings for, a, as soon as there's major developments, we're gonna, we're gonna have these meetings. It'll be really frequent. I am more than happy to, if, if you've got a neighborhood group that would gets together, I think any of us would be more than happy to come and talk. There's a group that wants to meet, uh, Friday afternoon. Dan and I just kind of made arrangements last night to accommodate them, or like to talk to a group on Friday afternoon. The last thing we want to do is, is do any of this transaction in the dark. You're absolutely right. That, these are public funds. They're, they're your taxpayer dollars. You have a right to see where every penny is spent. And, and we're committed to, to doing that. You know, but we don't want to build a jail. We, we really don't want to build a jail. We have to build a jail and we're going to make this process just as open as we can and answer any questions.
I really do appreciate that and I appreciate you all having taken time now to show us the site, not tweet. Um, I know that you've really tried to reach out and help, uh, you know, help alleviate concerns. I do want to just take a second and I, um, to just say a little tangent because I've got some ears. But the real, I mean, the real reason why we are so concerned on the north side is because we don't have representation. We don't have representation in the elected officials, um, of all the people who will be making this decision. The city council, like, um, county commission, planning commission. One person lives north, in North Cedars. And, and that person doesn't live in our neighborhood. So that is like eighteen people who are making this decision and, and you're coming here saying, oh, this is going to be awesome for you. Like, this is going to be so great. It's going to be a safe place. And it's not your backyard. And we just feel like we don't have representation. And the track record hasn't been awesome. It's not, it's not you. It's kind of everything. Because, um, you know, we've wanted parks, we've got nothing. I, I know, you know, Danny says he's been trying to help get us some commercial activity out there, which we still appreciate because we need that. But what we did, our multi-family units, and what we did is, um, is no parks. You know, so we, we don't get anything on the north side and then all of a sudden it's like, congratulations, you're getting a jail. And so if you maybe put yourself in our shoes as to how that feels to, to, to feel kind of neglected and unrepresented, and then all of a sudden.
I get it. Sure.
Let me say one more.
Absolutely.
So I just want to say, when I went out knocking doors, fiddlers were my very favorite part.
Well, I remember when you came to my door.
I loved it. They're the, just the great people up there. And, and we want, we want to have a really nice area up there. You've got those beautiful schools there, um, just across this, you know, main street. And, and, and I know the city does too. We've been working on this and, and we really want that too. And, and, and maybe there is something for the site where the jail is now to put apart. We don't know, but, but down the road, you know, we really want to, to do that. But, um, we really need to move on.
Can I, can I interject this for a minute? I, I want to, I want to speak. There's been a couple of times, even intimations that somehow the commissioners haven't been transparent. I, I bristle just a little bit at that. We've had multiple public hearings. And I also want to clarify that there is transparency and, and I expect, and I think everyone will find that the commissioners are very transparent. But there are just a few times when, um, a public body can have a closed session, and one of which is for negotiating the property. So to talk specifically about prices in public is probably not appropriate before the fact because there are negotiations that still need to happen. And so I would say, I would just remind everyone that this is going, this is a legislative decision. And that means that that falls to the commissioners, um, based on all the facts to, to, to make that decision. Now, certainly after the fact, I, I, I'm sure we'll be very transparent about, you know, how we, how we came about. But I, I do want to manage that expectation that, that, that you're not going to have all the information up front because we, it doesn't exist yet and it's not then being talked about. So, yes, transparent, but that doesn't mean you get to sit in the room with the commissioners.
And if I can just, oh, go ahead, no.
I, I could just, you know, I encourage, I understand that.
And I wasn't, I'm sorry, I wasn't just speaking of what you'd said. There's been several little remarks, so.
Sure. No, and I appreciate that. I would encourage that if there is a trade that goes forth, that it will be fair and that there won't be any, uh, special perks given to anybody.
It'll all be nice on the freezing.
Yeah, and, and I just, so knowing that we, I, I mean, this is our project. But knowing it's our project, we're going to do everything that we can to make that whole area successful around it. We're, we're, we're not looking to come and drop something in the middle of it and then walk away. We, we just, we want the success as bad as you do. It's been really frustrating on my economic development. I've been involved in these discussions with the Costcos and with the, the Targets and they suck. I hate those guys. I, I, my, I, my wife's first cousin is a, is a high-ranking executive in Costco. And I sat down with her at a funeral and she's like, I, I feel your plight, but no. And this is why. I mean, basically, we have to have two hundred and fifty thousand people within a sixty-mile radius without another Costco. And they, all they care about is, is rooftop. They suck. And so if we can, if, so, you know, it, that's why we're changing our strategy to try and say, okay, let's, let's gather more data that's more accurate, that can show the amount of people that we have here, not just rooftops. And, and so we're working really hard to try and change that and to try and sway, you know, their algorithms. So I, I mean, we're committed to, to making it a success, not just drop something there and walk away.
Can I?
I won't take it any more time.
Can I, uh, say one thing about the trade out to the, to the, uh, Iron Springs area? That's another thing that we're looking closely at. And, and the reason why is to save more tra, taxpayer money. The reason why we're looking at that is because the logistics of our, our, uh, garbage trucks going out and going the way that they are, and they have to go way up to the pit. So if we go on Desert Mound Road, it'll save us several, a couple of miles. So that's, that many more. So the, the things that we're looking at out there are to save Iron County's money. That, that's a huge part of if we do trade, that, that's what that will be. And, and I just wanted to throw that out there because it's not like we're trying to give Frank a good deal or whatever. But by going up that other way, you're right in the pit, not having to go clear up and over.
You want to talk about that a little?
I think our truck, I think our trucks get two miles to the gallon.
Yeah, yeah.
If we can, if we can save two or three miles per transaction, we're literally saving.
So, yeah, can you point at that?
Yeah.
John? So, um, Iron Springs Road.
Right here.
Is you come up to there and right up to, to the.
That's the shack.
That's the shack where you weigh.
Right there, sorry.
Uh-huh, right there. Yep, yep. So when you go all the way to there and then have to come clear up to the pit and see how far the pit is up that road.
Versus coming off Desert Mound Road.
That Desert Mound Road would come right there and right into the pit.
And there are, there are logistics for us to have to work through as a county, but, but if you think about how many times, not just Cedar, or, you know, Iron County trucks, but Cedar and Eden. But if you think about how many times, not just Cedar, or Iron County trucks, but Cedar and other municipalities.
And our other businesses that Paul's guarding. So that's the thing that we're looking at. So it's not, it's not like.
It's kind of a win-win-win.
Yeah, for us, it's not for the other landowner. It's to do something that makes sense for Iron County.
Before everybody gets excited, there's a major road impervent. Whatever you head up there. It's not wide enough. So whatever, it's a narrow road.
Yeah.
But it's a great, it's a great option.
It's a wonderful plan.
So maybe something down the road.
One of the things that Justin reminded me of was to, just draw everyone's attention. So this is our website, ironcounty.net. And if you scroll down here, there is a quick link to new jail information. And to that point, we have literally the video from our February 8th meeting, our February 22nd meeting, a lot of the slides, the March 14th meeting, this map, which admittedly, the star probably is in the wrong place.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, not right there. But, and then some of the maps are charts that Dennis put together and then these flyovers and then pictures. And then I believe Rob has sent us. It wasn't up there? Okay.
Yeah, it's the button at the top.
So this is, this was Rob's presentation from today. So please be aware that you all from Cedar City direct your constituents to that. Like I wrote in the email yesterday, so often if we get half a dozen of those questions answered, a lot of the big concerns seem to fade away for folks.
A lot of people don't go on the site. I'm not saying.
No.
Yeah, but it's a good place, good resource.
Oh, I think you have the possibility for information absolutely. From my perspective, articles that are in the St. George newspaper or the Iron County.
So Jeffrey, your chair.
Are more informative for me because if you're working, like I mean, this reality is changing events and things. I could sit down on Saturday and read those articles and someone understand how that works. And I think that's the most helpful.
We, in fact, I had some training up north this week and I was saying just how much I appreciate it. Jeff, he's the one guy that gives us voice in that regard, other than what we can do on our own website and social media. So thank you, Jeff, and we will.
I think we should go out to the site and do that portion of the, and look over the site, see how far it is off the main road.
John, can you pull up that map and show everybody?
Yeah.
We need to go down that angled road, down the parallel line road. That's the road we're going down.
Yeah, to get there.
Can you show that?
Yeah, so.
We'll meet right there. You'll need four-wheel drive because it is a little bit of a rough road, so.
So this is the intersection that's Love's and Swain. You'll go right and you, right as you go off the oil, you go straight. And then make sure you're telling them, right, Paul, I think you have to be here to the right, about right there.
So is there anybody that needs a ride that is in a car that would like to go with one of our people? Because we've got plenty of vehicles that. If there is, come over and let us know.